Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 1st, 2013 City Council Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, help us tonight. Do the right thing for the community. And God bless all our men and women in the service and bring them home safe. Amen.
Thank you, Ralph. Announcements or written communication? Do you have anything, Ben?
I'm not aware of anything, Mayor. Unless there's one in the community.
Counsel? Okay. Oral communications. Anyone in the audience care to address the counsel for any item that's not currently on our agenda? You may come forward.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
I'll get that. Not see anyone come forward. Denise, let's see who's missing.
Oh, yeah.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Morrow.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ponse.
Here.
And Mayor Kennedy.
Yeah, I'm now here. Okay, consent calendar, Ben.
You know, actually, may we please briefly return to oral communication simply because...
I would love to.
I remember that Mr. JH did have a brief update he was going to give.
Wayne, you want to ring?
The Lower Terrace Project. Just wanted to bring you up to speed. We're procuring all the necessary insurances and bonding information. The contract has been submitted to the contractor. He's ready, willing, and able. At this present time, we plan to give him an NTP, Notice to Proceed, probably the end of this month or the first week of November. However, we need the bonds in place, and that's what we're waiting for at this present time. So, other than that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
So, your plan is to start right in on it?
He's gonna get, Mr. Mayor, the Notice to Proceed probably the latest first week in November. At that time, he'll start manufacturing his materials. And he's got a lot of work to do on the mainland to fabricate the cribbing and the lagging and to get all those equipment and materials in place. And he'll barge them over sometime mid-November, the end of November, and probably start real construction at that time. I would imagine to see his equipment here the fourth week in November, first week of December, at which time he'll start. In the interim, we're working with Edison, meeting with Edison out there October 9th. They have some facilities to relocate, and we're gonna identify all that information. The contractor's also coming, so we don't overlook anything. We worked out some situations with the palm trees with the island company. As you know, there's an easement there, and we have that all resolved. And everything seems to be in place. Only thing we're waiting for is the contractor's bond, which we anticipate shortly.
And if it does rain this winter, is there any additional costs to the city?
No, none whatsoever. He's got a fixed price. He's gonna be prepared. I'm told that perhaps most of the rain on the island happens after the first of the year. Of course, we never know, but he's gonna be totally prepared.
None of us remember.
I'm quite confident in his procedure, the way he's discussed so far. He's gonna be constructing little portions at a time rather than opening up the whole project. Because as the city attorney has mentioned, when you're exposed in winter months, you're taking a chance. The contractor's aware of that, and he's gonna be proceeding on little short increments, which I agree with, his method. We can't direct his method. It's against all policies, but I'm glad he's going in that avenue, proceeding in segments.
And how long should it take?
He's got 120 days of contract calendar days. I'm sure he'll get the majority of the work in probably in 70 to 80 days. That's, of course, if we don't have any unforeseen conditions or any situations arise that might extend his contract. But everything's looking good. Like I said, though, we're waiting for his bond, and once everything's in place, we'll give him the Notice to Proceed.
How's Pebbley Beach?
Pebbley Beach. The contractor's piping and equipment and everything he needs is coming on the barge Friday.
Right.
Yeah. Monday morning, we're gonna meet out there. We've got some preliminary work to do on the bypass. As you know, there's live sewage going down there, and the contractor and the city are working well together. We're gonna ensure that everything's gonna flow properly, and it's gonna allow him to construct this tight, tough, little project properly. We're gonna be monitoring him quite frequently and consistently. But it's all set and ready to go. He's been proactive, acquiring all of his stuff, and we're real happy about that.
Thanks.
So, it's going.
Thank you, Mr. JH.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Mayor, for letting us deviate.
No problem.
Wayne Griffin, Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to talk to you about the Catalina Triathlon, which is scheduled for November 2nd. And we have gotten permission through the Recreation Department to utilize the Pebbley Beach Road over Mount Ada bicycle course, which was the original bike course. After your last comments, I'm concerned now about Pebbley Beach Road. How long is that construction due to last?
That's supposed to be quick.
I can't give you an exact date on how long it's gonna last. Our biggest concern is public safety, of course, and the continual flow of sewage. If things work out fine, I would anticipate no more than two months. But keep in mind, this construction's on the side of the road. It's gonna be barricaded off very nicely.
Yeah, Wayne, if you go out and look, it's on the other side of the K-rail.
Yes. It's on the side of the road, and I think that's a plus. Okay?
The hillside.
Yes, sir.
Between the hill and the K-rail.
It's on, yes.
So, is the bypass, however are you gonna bypass the sewer line while that work is going on, is that equipment also gonna be on the hillside side of the K-rail?
Correct. We're gonna protect that with a lot of K-rail. Some city forces are gonna help us there. We plan on putting the high line, which we call the bypass, that's carrying the sewage way off to the side of the road, on the inland side of the road, behind the K-rail.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay?
Okay.
Perfect. That's good news. Thank you. Good news all around. Our triathletes are really excited about getting back to this original bike course. As you know, since Pebbley Beach Road has been closed, we were forced to go up Avalon Canyon, and it was a nightmare for everyone involved. Not the most safe course in the world, so we're delighted to get back over Mount Ada. It does present some challenges, however, and I'm here to ask you tonight to consider closing some roads for all of an hour and 20 minutes, which we hope won't inconvenience folks too bad. We would ask you to close Pebbley Beach Road from the mole out to Edison, where it intersects with Wrigley Road. Close Wrigley Road, the entire length over the hill, back down to Clemente. Clemente, close from that intersection at Wrigley right to the intersection of Beacon. Close Beacon to Clarissa. And then on Clarissa, we've got enough room that we can cone a bike lane down the right-hand side of the road, all the way to Crescent, and then again, all the way out to the mole, so that we don't have to actually close down Clarissa. But it would really help us with safety and bicycle safety and spectator safety if we could close those other roads from 9:00 AM to 10:20 AM. Spectrum Sports has gone back there. The company we hired actually managed the triathlon for us. They've gone back and looked at transition times from the swim to the bike and then to the run, and they're pretty confident that the bicycles won't be on the road before 9:00. Actually, they think about 9:10. And the last rider will be through by 10:20, and we can open things back up again.
Talk about the boats.
We looked at boat schedules. Thank you very much, Denise. We looked at boat schedules. There's nothing due in until about 10:15, when we have two boats in a 149 passenger Catalina Express and the Catalina Flyer from Newport. So, we'll be almost finished by the time they get in, but cabs will still be able to get back and forth to the mole. We plan on using actual physical fencing to create a transition from the bike staging area on South Beach to get them out onto Pebbley Beach Road. Remember, the last few years when we've been using Avalon Canyon, we've asked the bicyclists to walk their bikes until they were up in front of vans, small vans. We're gonna do the same thing here. We're gonna ask them to walk their bikes down Crescent, actually get onto Pebbley Beach Road before they start riding. So, there'll be opportunities to keep them separate from the public. If we have to get vehicles through, we'll be able to do that. We think it can work out very well. And we'll make sure we get notices in newspapers and up on streets and all that kind of thing.
Would it make sense to eliminate the parking on the barricaded side of the street?
It would make sense, actually, to put no parking signs the entire length of Clarissa on both sides for that morning only. You'd only have to restrict it to Saturday morning. Yeah, that would help a lot.
That'd make that road that much wider.
Well, we definitely want it to start Friday so that...
Well, I'd like signage to be up sooner than that. We wanna give people plenty of...
Know that they would have to be gone by Friday.
Plenty of notice, yeah.
So, there also would be notification to all the businesses, the island company...
Absolutely.
...the barge.
My wife, yes.
All those guys, everybody like that. Plus, people... Scott, you've got your city code book open.
Yeah, the municipal code provides that the city council can issue an encroachment permit. It's the role of the city council to issue an encroachment permit if a street is gonna be closed. So, the appropriate thing would be to just file the application. Staff would recommend that we do that at the next council meeting, and we give you that encroachment permit, which would allow the streets to be closed.
And have you put the fire department and the sheriffs in the loop?
Yes.
They're in the loop now. And Wayne, just so you know, we did discuss the closure of the streets, and we're on board with it. Just Scott brought up this as a matter of...
Excellent. Perfect. No, that's great. That's why I'm here. We wanna do it the right way. So, we'll see about a permit tomorrow.
We're on board.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience have anything? Okay. Consent calendar.
Okay, yes, Mayor. There are four items on the consent calendar this evening. I do need to point out that we need to amend the first item to reflect that it's only approving actions from the September 3rd meeting and not the September 16th meeting, as is listed on the agenda. Outside of that, you have expenditures submitted and the amount of warrants of $32,977.77. You have additional warrants and the amount of $902,353,027. Payroll and the amount of $193,965.24. An EFT for the fuel dock, sales tax and the amount of $15,414 for a grant total of $1.1 million for item number three. And then finally, you have a reimbursement agreement for development with the Santa Catalina Island Company. I do see that Chris Wilhelm from the company is here, should you have any questions about that particular item.
And on that item, on consent calendar item number four, Councilmember Hernandez would be recusing himself from voting on that, but because it's on consent calendar, you can stay. You don't have to leave the dock.
Okay. There's four items on the consent calendar. Why don't we take care of the first three first? Any member of the audience care to comment on any of the three items on consent? Anyone on the council care to entertain a motion then for items 1 through 3?
Moved.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
All ayes.
All right. Item number four on the consent calendar, which is the reimbursement agreement for the development project, Santa Catalina Island Company. You have had the opportunity, Chris, to read the staff report.
Yes, I have.
And do you... Questions? You bet.
Can we pull item four off the consent calendar?
Let's pull item number four off the consent calendar.
That means, Richard, you have to... Let's discuss.
Sorry, Richard.
Consent calendar. See you, David. I'm not sure.
Sorry. Chris Wilhelm, Catalina Island Company. We appreciated the opportunity to work with staff on the agreement, and we're sort of happy to get started with this conversation. Just one clarification. The explanation to us, or the way I understood, the agreement was it was for our reimbursement of the city of any of its third-party costs to help the city avoid having to come out of pocket for any costs to negotiate any of the agreements or issues that are described in this agreement. It's the way I read the agreement when we went back and forth with staff on it, but then I saw the staff report last night, and it looks like it's also asking us to cover staff time at an undetermined rate, and we weren't clear on that.
The municipal code provides that for, we have a fee schedule for EIRs and for mitigated negative decks that, to the extent there are staff costs involved in that, that entities are required to reimburse the city for staff cost time. So, we would be keeping track of staff cost, staff time on this.
The way I read, and this is just probably my lack of understanding, the way I read the fee schedule, there's a one version, Scott, of a mitigated neg deck that there's a straightforward fee for. And then there's another version of a mitigated neg deck that if, to the extent it requires outside resources, that the applicant's required to pay for the cost of that, I think, plus a 20% admin fee. And so, can you help me with the distinction there? In the first case, there's a flat fee for that, where I'm not paying for staff time. In the second case, where you require outside resources, I assume I would pay, we would pay the fee plus whatever the outside costs were. So, am I misunderstanding that?
No, it is because this is a development agreement, which is substantially different from just a standard EIR or standard mitigated negative declaration. For the work associated with the development agreement in terms of the negotiation time, staff time to, again, talk about perhaps exchange of properties, it is intended that those costs would be borne by the island company because it's, again, it's the island company's project, and so the city would not bear the processing cost of the island company's project. And I think that's the way the agreement's been read since we sent it two months ago.
Sorry. So, is it fair to say that any project that doesn't require a development agreement or an EIR would not be subject to this agreement?
I didn't get the first question.
So, if there is no development agreement, if there's a project that we are proposing that doesn't require a development agreement, that doesn't require an EIR to be done, that we're just, will be processed like a typical project?
Yes. For instance, if something is just like, it's just like a regular project that is not encompassed by this agreement, and the whole purpose of this agreement is we're gonna have our kickoff meeting in three weeks, and those matters that are covered by this agreement would be covered, you'd have to reimburse the city for those costs. Other projects that are standard projects, it's the normal fee schedule.
Okay. So, in that first conversation, I'm sorry to belabor this, but in that first conversation where we decide what the sequel process is for each one of these projects, if that group, including obviously staff, decides that one of those projects is not, does not need to be part of a development agreement or does not need to be part of an EIR, then that one would be treated like any other project?
Again, that's the purpose of our kickoff meeting, to understand, because we have not seen the specific projects. We've got a pro forma, which lists five projects.
Right.
It's the intent of this agreement that, to the extent that those projects are discussed, that they be covered by this agreement.
Okay. So, the language of the agreement now says, or the, when I combine it with the staff report language, it would say that it's subject to the rates that are in the agreement. The only rates in the agreement are rates for the law firm. There aren't any rates for staff time or any other consulting fees. So, is that something we would amend the agreement when we decide who's gonna be involved?
As each consultant is hired, the agreement provides that we will consult with the island company in the selection of those consultants. And in fact, in most EIRs, it's the island company that would select that a consultant. So, you can control the cost there. And then the city costs are determined by looking at who's working and amortizing their, the cost in terms of looking at their salary and benefits, assigning a dollar value to that.
Okay.
And then using that as, you know, they spend three hours on it, it's that times that cost.
I would think that you know, would know those numbers now, cost of the planning director.
We can provide those numbers to you.
Okay, that's great.
As part of the kickoff.
I just, I didn't understand that to be the intent until I read the staff report last night. Thought it was third-party costs.
And to be honest with you, when I read the staff report, I didn't understand it meant current city staff costs. I thought it kind of implied that it would be outside support like you suggested prior. So...
Take it out of the DDA.
Say again?
Take it out of the DDA.
Take what out of the DDA?
Projects out, and then it'd be like regular projects.
I guess that'll be the subject of our meeting on the 23rd. So, that's all I had. If you had those rates, I wouldn't mind having them attached to the agreement.
Anyone else care to comment on item number four? Counsel discussion?
For the people that don't have this information in front of them, this is a reimbursement agreement for the development of particular projects, which include grocery store, residential housing units, improvements to the existing country club venue, and significant upgrade to the existing golf course. The key words in this agreement is the reimbursement agreement specifically states that the proposed development projects are conceptual only and that by entering into the reimbursement agreement, the city is not approving or promising to approve any portions of the proposed development. So, it was just, it's just a research and going through and preparing for an official development agreement, which comes way later. So, that's what this is all about.
Is this any different than any other agreement we do with a developer coming in?
Well, this is the first you've done in a couple of years, but this is a standard development agreement that any substantial development, but first you do a reimbursement agreement while you're discussing the scope of the actual development agreement or development agreements, plural, because there may be a series of development agreements. And so, it's always, this is standard, this is a standard agreement for this. The development agreement within, if one is developed or several is developed, comes back for the council to approve. Any entitlements have to go through Planning Commission. So, this is just the start of a long process, but it makes certain that the city is not paying for the developer's development.
Chris, you move back towards the podium.
Sorry. So, to be clear again, this is a standard agreement just codifying what you already have in your fee schedule. And so, previous development agreements that you guys have negotiated, you have charged other developers staff time?
We have charged, in other, again, this is the first development I've done for Avalon. I don't know what it was with the Hamilton Pacific Agreement, but, you know, this is our standard agreement. And we've, again, we've negotiated this, we've had this before the island company for the last two months. So, I'm a little uncomfortable talking, now we're like renegotiating at the meeting.
And if I could interject here, this is also standard for other municipalities. This is not something unique to Avalon. I can tell you that from experience. This is not something that is only on the island.
I don't know about Hamilton Pacific, but the original Hamilton Cove, they reimburse for staff time.
Okay. So, there must be a form somewhere that says what each staff, per person, per hour is worth, if we've done this before.
Now, there can be.
I would further add that as interaction takes place with other agencies and organizations, for example, Southern California Edison, there will be similar agreements that you will need to enter into. For example, if you are looking to enhance the infrastructure for electricity to go along with the project, it's customary for the utility to request an engineering advance just to study the feasibility of that, and I can tell you that with certainty.
All due respect, I understand how other jurisdictions work, have worked in other jurisdictions. It varies jurisdiction to jurisdiction. Just wanna make sure that, you know, we're being treated like everybody else is, and that's the only concern.
Absolutely.
We have no problem covering real costs. The comment, Scott, about that it's been in our hands for a few weeks, yes, but all of those conversations and emails have never talked about paying for staff time. So, first clarification for me, and my fault for not reading into it and understanding it, but the first real clarification for me was, staff report was real clear. The agreement itself, for me, less clear. That's all.
Thanks, Chris.
Any other discussion, counsel? Anyone care to entertain a motion then on item number four?
Move staff.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Four ayes, one abstention. Councilmember Hernandez.
Go get him.
I'll go grab it.
No, leave him back there.
Ooh.
Are you already on your airplane?
We have time to share this?
Sure. Ready for your clothes, Mr. Wilson? You just need to make sure that Dudley gets a good shot at it.
It's a really good shot at it.
Yes.
Okay.
Just one quick item along with councilmembers Morrow, Mayor Protem Ponse, and councilmember Olson. I attended the Leaky California Cities Conference in Sacramento the week of the 16th. As has been my experience in the past, I found it to be informative. Lots of interesting ideas and challenges discussed, also a terrific network opportunity for us here on the island. So, thank you for affording that opportunity to me.
Scott?
Nothing to report.
Counsel?
I'm good.
I just wanna report that I got back to the room Thursday night earlier than anybody else. Also, I do have one other little thing. In my trips around city properties, there's a lot of stuff out there. We got a lot of stuff scattered everywhere. Do we know how much stuff we have scattered hither and thither?
When you say stuff...
Pipes, you know, just stuff. Building equipment, building supplies, just stuff.
City stuff?
City stuff. You know, city warehouse's got a lot of stuff inside of it. By the city warehouse, a lot of stuff. And we were talking about putting the bypasses for the sewer. There's a whole bunch of sewer pipe somewhere, I've seen.
We'd be happy to talk to the Public Works Department about their inventory.
Cool.
Michael?
I just wanted to comment about going to the Leaky Conference. It was really nice having the three of us there. It felt like the city was being well represented. We appreciate Ben being there and Scott being there, even though he blew us off for the city of La Piñata, Clint Reg. But it was, it was nice to have a good representation there. But it was, it was nice to have a good representation there. But it was, it was a good conference.
Yeah. And thanks for the ride back to the airport, Scott. Appreciate that.
No problem. Rich? Just any update on the sweeper, repair of the sweeper, street sweepers? Anything like that?
I know it is currently being worked on. I know that there was an issue with a part. I do not have an update, but I will be happy to bring one to you as soon as possible.
This morning, I saw the street sweeper with a broom.
That's one way to sweep.
Right. We're doing it the old-fashioned way, right now.
Okay. We have closed session this evening?
Yeah, we have three items, public employee performance evaluation, fire chief, as well as chief administrative officer, and conference with legal negotiators regarding the unrepresented employee chief administrative officer.
Okay. Good night, Tony.
Any report on Saturday? Any update on Saturday?
Doug, are you good?
Okay, we're back on the air, for those patient enough to watch the blue screen. Would you care to report back, Scott?
Yeah, there are no reportable actions.
Okay. Anyone else have anything, Dad?
Just in case, read the deal, Ethan.
I'll remember. Remember. Okay. We're adjourned.